Terrific. I think we're ready to begin. Okay, great. Nice to see everybody. Good evening. It's Thursday, May 6th, and it's my pleasure to make a motion to return to public session. If I could have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Julia. Thank you, Bill. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. Six zero. And would everybody please join us by rising for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Tonight, we are looking forward to welcoming back our auditors, who are going to speak with us about a risk assessment recently conducted in the district. We are looking forward to our budget hearing, our last opportunity to hear about the budget before we go out to the community to ask community members to vote on it, and also looking forward to candidate's statements. And we will begin with our student board member report. If you're ready, Sawyer, I'd love to turn it over to you. Thank you.
All right. So this past month, students re-entered schools and droves across the district and brought back a more traditional classroom setting. Students were reunited with teachers in classrooms. Collaborative learning became much more easy and not a difficult technical or nor a technical task. Students ate lunch together, divided by Plexiglas distanters, and they ate at a distance and spent time outdoors, be it at recess or during a picnic on the high school's front lawn. Students and teachers alike seem to enjoy the return to normalcy and are optimistic about the remaining weeks to come. So a little news from the high school. So the varsity volleyball team and varsity football teams both completed seasons that they were very successful in, and both teams had excellent records and made John Jay High School quite proud. Also, I feel like I'm constantly congratulating these students, but students, particularly seniors, enrolled in the high school's science research program, received more or receiving more and more awards and recognition at local and regional events where they display their work in symposiums. At the middle school, students have taken up photojournalism as an as a form of expression to inform others. Through the school's publication, The Purple Press, they're able to discuss historical figures and the importance of today's social movements. Those are two articles that they have been specifically highlighted. As a part of the middle school's family and consumer science curriculum, students have been exploring food, and sixth graders are experimenting in the school's garden, planting various ingredients to be harvested, while seventh graders are testing recipes for healthy food options from global cuisines. At Increase Miller, students arrived at school on the first cohort list day with a display of balloons that beckoned them into the building. It was quite fun to see. And students had their pictures taken as a way to remember their excitement on the first day back in school. At KES, kindness ambassadors serve to remind students how best to act. They show that kindness is necessary in all environments, and the kindness ambassadors help ingrate positive messages into other students' minds with informative presentations and discussions. And these kindness ambassadors are fifth graders who volunteered for their positions. At Meadow Pond Elementary School, presentations on sustainability and environmentalism were given by fifth graders to the schools on the school's daily broadcast, the Meadow Pond Review, and these presentations were to commemorate Earth Day and to instill environmentalism in the students' daily lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Sawyer. That was such a cheerful, comprehensive update. We so appreciate it, and we're so happy to be back. Almost three full weeks now, and we really appreciate your report from the field, so to speak. If I can just pick up where you left off, if I remember seeing something also in the Record Review recently, I think it was between our last board meeting and this one, that some of our students also were newly awarded Greenlight Awards at the high school, when you mentioned the science research students and then the environmental progress over at Meadow Pond. So congratulations also to those students, and thank you again for updating us on all of the happy activity across the campus. Do anybody have any comments or questions for Sawyer before we move on? Thank you again, Sawyer. We appreciate your remarks. I think this brings us to Board Subcommittee Reports, 7.01. And I know this evening, we're joined by our auditors. Julia, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything else before we move forward.
No, I think, you know, they'll present and thank you always to our community volunteers and our board volunteers who are on the audit committee and to Danelle and all of her staff in the business office for all their hard work. We did have an audit committee meeting where we're preparing for our external audit, but the report that we're going to have tonight is a continuation of our internal audit processes, so.
Great. Thank you. Anything from Finance Committee tonight?
It's been a while since we met, Marjorie. We actually have a Finance Committee meeting this coming Tuesday, during which we'll review a draft version of the presentation we plan to make to the board in June. Danelle has been, well, the entire committee, but Danelle in particular, has been working very hard to assist with preparing that presentation. And I'm looking forward to being able to present that in June after our next Finance Committee meeting this coming Tuesday.
Terrific. Thank you. Anything from Parent Council tonight, Catherine?
Parent Council had their candidates' night last night. I thought the candidates did a great job. I thought that I want to thank the Parent Council with the questions and organizing that event. I think it was really meaningful and important for our community to hear from our candidates. We have another Parent Council meeting tomorrow morning.
Terrific. Thank you so much. And yes, thank you to Parent Council for hosting the forum last night. Bill, would you like to say anything about policy? I know we have some policies on the.
Yeah, I've been saying for weeks now, well, wait till the third read. So it's the third read. I thought I just, it's a special ed policies. I thought I'd just very briefly touch on what these policies touch on. The biggest policy was programs for students with disabilities under IDEA. This is mostly a policy to help us comply with federal and state law and had some more details on how school staff refer for evaluation of a student, how an evaluation is started in other settings, how the testing accommodations are initiated, as well as transition services and diploma options with special education students. There was a policy, the title says it all, provision of special education services in the least restrictive environment. Most, all these policies, they're not brand new. It's more adjustments of previous of previous policies. School-wide pre-referral approaches and interventions. So this is a policy around implementing practices to enable to the degree positive, to the degree possible, success of students in the general education environment, sort of similar to the least restrictive environment. There's a policy around independent educational evaluation. This is the process and details around how a parent can get a independent evaluation of their child at the district's expense and how that's all done. There's a policy laying out the very strict provisions and significant restrictions on information around around social education students in terms of confidentiality, who gets access to when and why and outcome is sort of laid out in that policy. There's a policy about making available alternative format of instructional materials. This policy sort of means other than a printed book, so this is not news at all, but it just, it's sort of lays out clearly that there's every attempt made to provide instruction in the format that will be of greatest benefit to the student. And there's a policy on the procedures and interventions to use in emergencies for safety. And there were three policies that were deleted. They are other special education policies that are subsumed in these other other policies. And all of this we discussed as a committee and with our special with our special ed attorney to go over all of these. And I thank the committee. This was a big, a big lift in terms of a section this large, and I wasn't there for one of them, so that's how how come it, I think, went so smoothly. And I think this has gone a long way towards, you know, as we work our way through the policy book, this was a big chunk to get in the done pile.
Great. Thank you so much for the overview and thank you to the Policy Committee. Thank you. Our Sustainability Subcommittee is going to meet tomorrow morning, and we also are in the process of turning our attention toward the end-of-year update scheduled for June 17th, the same night as the Finance Committee. So I'm looking forward to reporting more on that later in the year. And then just regarding Westchester Putnam County School Board Association, hopefully you've seen on the consent agenda that tonight, our board has the opportunity to vote on their proposed budget and slate for next year. And once we do that, then I'll be glad to serve as the liaison at their end-of-year, May 24th meeting, where I'll represent Katona Lewis-Burrow and cast our vote for us. And I think that's all that I had for subcommittees tonight. There's no further comment or discussion, then we can move on to board announcements. And I'll just pause to see if any board members had other announcements tonight before we invite Andrew to provide an update on how things are going in our schools. And if not, we would love to hear from you, Andrew. Thank you so much. I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Marjorie. I'll be brief tonight because we do have a lot to get to in the rest of the agenda. The first thing I'll share just to supplement a little bit what Sawyer shared with us about the terrific return to school that we're all very pleased with. At our elementary schools now, we have just about 90% of our students coming into school each day in person. In the middle school, the number is about 84% each day in person, and at the high school here, it's about 82% in person. And from where we were just a few weeks ago, that's a huge change and one that we are very, very happy to see. And we know even since those numbers, we've had a few more requests from elementary families to move in person, and the elementary schools are working hard to accommodate those requests now. So maybe the number even will go up a little bit more as the year goes on, which is great. This has been, actually, we're still in Teacher Appreciation Week this week. It's a big time of year for appreciation of lots of different groups. Today is actually the National School Nurse Appreciation Day. Sometimes last week, it was School Principals Appreciation Day, and we've also, since our last board meeting, we had Administrative Professionals Day. It's always nice to have an opportunity to appreciate these groups. And in this year in particular, it feels all the more important to express just how greatly appreciative we are for all the work that everyone has been doing this year and this extraordinary year. And I also wanted to make sure that we thank our PTOs because they do a really nice job on behalf of all parents of letting all of those different staff members know how much their work is appreciated. So we appreciate the PTO for that. I think the only other thing I'll just say is just to give a shout out and a reminder to everybody about the opportunity for vaccinations. And that's become a little bit more, obviously, it's been very relevant to our staff for some time, but more recently, it's even become relevant to our students as vaccinations for those 16 and older have become available. And I'm happy to report that our high school administration, a couple of times now, has been able to push out opportunities that are specific for our high school students, and we certainly encourage people to take advantage, obviously, not only for the health, their own health, health and well-being and that of the community, but also because it eases some of the restrictions that we, and some of the hoops that we have to jump through for some of the end-of-year events. It makes it a little bit easier to facilitate some of the group gathering type activities, and not only to do them safely, but to do them efficiently and more easily in a way that everybody can enjoy. So if people can take advantage of that, we encourage them to do so. And that's the end of my update for tonight. Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions or comments before we move on? Okay. Thank you again, and please allow us to also express our appreciation to all of those individuals who are being celebrated this week and in recent weeks. We're enormously grateful to everybody for their efforts, especially this year. We couldn't do it without you, so thank you very much. And thanks for alerting us to the opportunity to express our gratitude. If there aren't any further comments or questions, then I think we are ready to welcome Sharon Easton back to our virtual board table.
While Kim is bringing them over, Sharon Easton and Bill Croft will be joining us today. They're both from Acumen Partners. They were, they performed interviews remotely via Zoom and performed their risk assessment. And as Julia said, met with our audit committee last week. And with that, I will turn the, turn this over to Sharon and Bill. So welcome both.
Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Can you see the screen in my, with the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Without further ado, I'll hand it over to Sharon.
Good evening, everyone. As Bill mentioned, my name is Sharon Easton, and I'm manager with Acumen Partners. And tonight, I will walk you through on a high level of the scope of our work during the risk assessment and the proposed audit for the fiscal year 2021. As the district's internal auditor, our primary responsibility is twofold. One is to assist the board in ensuring that the district's risks are identified, and second, to provide the board and management with a systematic systematic assessment of risk to ensure that appropriate internal controls are in place to mitigate those risks. In addition, as the past year was unusual, we also considered during our risk assessment, actions taken by the district as a result of COVID-19. Hence, our assessment results and suggested audit area is reflective of the perceived risk at that time. Our process included a district-wide analysis of the major district functions, processes, and controls. We considered qualitative and quantitative factors, such as materiality to the financial statements, policies and procedures, strategic planning, and organizational change. The risk assessment includes a quantitative risk rating that represents an aggregate assessment of the risk relative to the financial and operating environment, information technology, governance, internal controls, and compliance factors. In our risk assessment update, we re-evaluated the same functional areas to determine if there were any significant changes that would impact the risk evaluation. Other factors affecting the recommendation included board management priorities, limited resources, prior audit results, the opportunity for greater impact in adding value to the district, and the and the degree of organizational change in the functional areas. All of these factors are addressed when devising the recommendation for the next audit plan. Next line. Risk is defined as the internal and external factors that threaten and the achievement of the district's mission, goals, and objectives. The qualitative and quantitative factors are individually weighted for relevance and significance. Of course, some factors will affect the overall rate risk rating more than others. A factor that can increase the risk rating is the design of internal controls. Although our risk assessment does not test and evaluate the operational effectiveness of internal controls, our methodology includes the identification of internal controls as well as an evaluation of the design of those internal controls. If the district was lacking in a key control over a financial area, such as adequate segregation of duties or policies and procedures, that of course would create more of a risk. In addition, we reviewed for a system of internal controls that both prevent and detect errors. If the district has more controls in place that prevent errors, then the overall control environment would be stronger, and hence, there would be less risk than if the district relied solely on controls that may detect errors once they occurred. The ultimate goal is to effectively manage the risk in all functional areas through the implementation of a system of internal controls that help to ensure that errors, irregularities, and fraud are less likely to occur or go undetected. Next line. In performing our risk assessment, we recognize the district, we categorize the district into nine functional areas. We then utilize a rating methodology that takes into account quantitative and qualitative factors, such as the policies and procedures, financial materiality, operational change, employee knowledge and training, internal controls, management reporting, and laws and regulations. The composite risk rating score and level is as such. If a rating, a risk rating is below 131, it's considered low. If a rating is between 131 and 220, it's rated as medium, and anything north of 210 is considered high. Next line. Based on the risk rating score and the cycle for functional area last audited, we recommended that the next audit to be performed is budgeting, financial accounting, and reporting. This functional area has a risk rating of 159, which falls in a level of medium, and the last audit was performed in this area is in fiscal year 2012-13. The Audit Committee has approved the recommendation, and we are now presenting the recommendation to you, the board, for your discussion and approval. Audit planning for budgeting, financial accounting, and reporting would include, but is not limited to, a review of internal controls related to the fiscal, to fiscal accountability, review of internal controls around budget budget process, and a review and a review of financial reporting process, including controls around reconciliations and reporting to the board of BOD, Board of A.
Yeah, BOE.
BOE, exactly.
My apologies. That's my.
I was like, is that something? So at this time, I pause to take your questions. Bill and I pause to take your question.
Thank you so much, Sharon. We appreciate the presentation and overview of the Audit Committee's discussion and recommendation. Is anybody waiting to ask a clarifying question or make a comment?
Just have one comment, Marjorie, if that's okay. And it's back on slide, oops, the slides aren't numbered, but two slides prior to the last one. I noticed that one of our functional areas had an increased risk level this year over last year. It's government aid and grants, and I'm assuming that that might be around the uncertainty that we had around New York State funding for this year, but I'm not sure. I'm just curious, Sharon, if you wouldn't mind to just expand on that change in risk level.
Yes, Rory, you're absolutely correct. In addition to that, the state now requires us as internal auditors to look at your MRE calculation. And so because we now are responsible for that and an overview on the reporting of that, that also goes into calculating an increase in the risk assessment.
Oh, Rory, and I don't know if Julia wants to speak to this as well. So the Audit Committee that did come up in the Audit Committee as well, and that area was government aid, aid. And we thought that since next year, with the different stimulus packages, that there would be more aid coming in, that it might be worthwhile looking into that in a future year. So we have the CR SSA funds coming in next year, and then the American Rescue Plan, the ARP, funds coming in that we can use over a three-year timeframe. And just given knowing that those were coming, the Audit Committee thought that that would, it would be better to look in those higher used years moving forward.
And just as a, sorry, just as a reminder to the board, this is a retrospective analysis that they do. So this, you know, so even though they're doing it coming up, they're going to be looking back. And so that's what Danelle is saying, is that we, we have funding that's going to be coming forward. So we have to wait a year in order to look back at that, those processes.
That's super helpful. And in general, focusing on budget, financial accounting, and reporting next year, I think, is a really good idea. Not that I think there's anything amiss there, but since it's been, I, did you say 2012 year? So it's been, have been eight or nine years. It's probably time that we did that. So thank you so much, Sharon and Bill. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments, questions? Well, thank you. Thank you to the Audit Committee. Thank you, Sharon and Bill, for joining us. Sharon, thank you for the presentation. And we look forward to this future audit on our budget financial area. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Okay, terrific. Thank you again. And I think now we're ready to move on for an overview of the board's decisions budget and our required budget hearing. Should I turn it over to you, Andrew?
Well, thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you.
We're going to put up on the screen the, the slides that you're all very familiar with at this point. As Marjorie mentioned, though, this is a New York State requirement that we go through the budget one more time in what's called a budget hearing within a certain timeframe of the vote itself, which, as we know, is coming up on May 18th. So we're within two weeks now of that vote. And though the slides are familiar, this very first one, as Marjorie just pointed out previously, this had said the superintendent's proposed budget up until that time when the board adopted the budget several weeks ago. And now it's the Board of Education's proposed budget being presented for the community's information tonight. So we're going to go through these very familiar slides. We'll go through them relatively quickly since you have seen them. There have been no changes since the last time, but certainly if there are any questions, we'd like to take them. And when we're right on to the next slide, we begin always with our learning commitment. We continue to strive towards an environment that is active, engaging, and relevant for our students. And we'll keep moving forward into the board's goals. At the beginning of the year, the board developed these two goals. The first goal here about leadership and the second goal here, which is particularly relevant to the development of the budget that speaks to developing a budget that is, does not exceed the tax cap, which this budget does not do. And you see the other goals there under fiscal stewardship. So we continue moving forward. The budget is developed over an extended period of time, really even starting all the way back in the prior school year, but then picking up again with the, with those goals. And we worked through the, through the budget all through the fall and with our administrators throughout the district as long, along with teacher leaders who are giving input until that time in February, when we first present the beginning of the budget to our board. Moving forward, we always point out the enrollment. And this year, we pointed out that after those quite a number of years of fairly steep decline that you see reflected on the chart with the, with the overall reduction of just over 23% of population. But we also pointed out this year that if we're now looking at, let's say, the last four or five years, you see a much shallower, still a small decline, but 1.9% in the last, from the last three years and looking ahead to next year. So perhaps things are leveling off. And now we see the budget itself. You see up top there, the current year budget of $111,472,880. We're proposing, the board is now proposing for the community, a budget of $113,242,880. That's an increase of $1.77 million or a 1.59% increase from budget to budget. This is a slide that you've seen, the board has seen in past years. We put it here for safer comparison because we said these are the typical budget drivers for, in this very unusual year, we did make some adjustments. So if we move ahead to the next slide, here, we focus now on contingent thinking and planning to be sure that we are entirely prepared for any eventualities next fall, which we think, in fact, from the summer and into the fall. Yeah, just to remind board and community, in this whole last pandemic year, we were operating on a budget that was largely developed before we knew what was coming in the last year. So with, with the development of this budget happening during the pandemic, we were able to think very carefully about what the needs, what the variety of different needs might be and plan with, with all of that variety in mind. So we'll keep moving forward, and we'll hear more about that now. So some of the contingent thinking you see reflected here in the, and you can see how things even have evolved as the budget has been developing, because as we wrote here, in the event that social distancing remains a requirement, there have been some changes in social distancing requirements, even. there have been some changes in social distancing requirements even since we first wrote this slide. But it is still in place, and should it still be in place for the fall? We certainly hope, we all hope, and I'm knocking on wood as I say this, that there's no reason to have more stringent social distancing. But should that, should that be necessary? We think this budget prepares us for that also, with some additional resources for additional staffing if necessary. And then, as you see in the second part of the slide, if social distancing is reduced, we're also, in no way, shape, or form are we assuming that the next school year will simply be a return to the way things were a year and a half ago. We recognized that it's been a very dramatic and traumatic year. We need to pay attention to how we come out of this. We need to be very thoughtful about what our students need in terms of support as we return to what we hope will be a full-time, regular school year next year. And we are, feel very fortunate that our board has supported, again, a variety of resources from additional academic resources, should students need that extra academic support to other types of extracurricular and social emotional supports, given all that we've learned in the past year about the value of those things. So we feel good about having those contingencies in place for next year. We also want to make sure that we do a lot of learning from this experience of the past year. So you see here at least five different areas. Technology integration and implementation, science education and sustainability support for all learners, race equity and inclusion, and social emotional learning. We want to make sure that we take stock of all that's happened in these areas in the past year, that we think carefully about how we move forward, that we don't make assumptions. It's somewhat easy to pick on the technology because it was so apparent in the past year just how rapidly we had to make really dramatic shifts in terms of technology much more rapidly than we ever would have in the past. So we don't want to assume that we just move forward doing all the same things in the same way. We want to be thoughtful and make sure we're continuing to do what makes sense, but also making changes as necessary. So the budget supports that kind of reflection and learning as necessary. Moving on. We always, we always, if you just go back, one, there we go. Enrollment class size program, always very important to us. We are adding in this budget, if approved, one school psychologist who will serve as an additional CSE chairperson and CSE evaluator. Our special education staff are enormously busy. Our administrative staff is enormously busy running a tremendous number of meetings throughout the year. It becomes particularly heavy in the spring. With the addition of this psychologist to do some of that work, it will also free up staff to be more involved in direct work with staff, with other, with teaching staff and with students, so that we can provide really the best and most robust support for all of our students in a special education program. So we really appreciate the addition, the proposed addition of that position. We always want to maintain favorable class sizes. And this budget does include four contingency positions, which would only be allocated if it becomes necessary to open additional sections because of enrollment changes, because of course request changes at the high school. So we appreciate the inclusion there. Infrastructure, we always want to maintain the facilities well, keep them up to date. We know it's important for students to be in well-maintained, students and staff, I should say, to be in well-maintained, healthy and appropriately modern learning environments. So you see a variety of work here, some of which we were able to get a head start on, and that we prioritized particularly things like HVAC. We did a lot of work in the past year and still look ahead to doing more of that as we want to create the best possible environment. As we said, we've learned a great deal about that in the last year. Earlier tonight, you heard mention of sustainability committees, and I was happy to hear about sustainability work among our students. We're going to be hearing more from our sustainability committee in a few weeks' time. But you even see here a reference to some work that we are excited about doing to make sure that we continue to be as environmentally sustainable as possible in our facilities, as well as in our curriculum and in our learning. So more to come about that. We look now in more detail at enrollment, student enrollment, because that's such a driver of the budget. You can see here a slide that is, that is new this year, never seen before. But here are the all remote learning sections that existed this year at the elementary schools. We don't know if these sections will exist next year. It's too soon for us to know that at this time, but they were necessary this year. So we, we put them here because it's important to note when you see the slides to come that all of these elementary students are coming from our three elementary schools. And they're combined together in these remote sections. So the 150 students that you see there on the bottom right would otherwise be within the enrollment that you're about to see at Katona and Meadow Pond and Increase Miller. So we'll move on. Here you see the district-wide projections for kindergarten. It's been a few years now that we've pulled kindergarten out separately because it's so challenging to get the numbers very precise when the students are not yet in the district. We have found it to be a little bit more accurate to project across the three schools collectively. So you can see there, we are showing an increase of one section. Though I think that's not a budget to budget increase. I think we had 11 sections in the budget for this year, but didn't need them all. So I think it's a flat in terms of budget to budget, if I'm recalling that correctly. But we certainly feel like that number will, should, should be appropriate. And if we see dramatic changes, we do have the contingency position available. Moving on, now we look at Increase Miller. And, and one thing we point out here, again, you see the remote number down at the bottom. So 66 students as of October were learning remotely and are not factored into those sections above. And that makes a considerable difference as you move into next year. So typically, we've always encouraged people to look on the diagonal. So in first grade, well, let's use second grade as the example. You see three sections this year in second grade. Next year, you see four sections in third grade. But that's likely because we are. I just want to make sure I'm saying that correctly, that we are, we are placing back in the students who this year would be remote. So it's not necessarily that we're expecting to see an influx in enrollment. The enrollments here already, the numbers were lowered this year because of the students being pulled out for remote. So again, we, we put those class sizes over on the right. And we also know that some of these numbers may be subject to change. That's why those contingency positions are so important to us. We will keep monitoring these numbers as we move through the spring and even into the early summer. And if we become uncomfortable with any of them, we know that we have those contingency positions available to us to make an adjustment if necessary. Moving on, you see Katona. Here you see three sections across the board in, in all the grade levels. But again, this year, in part, it's because of those remote students that have pulled out. Next year, it looks like the numbers may just work out that way. That's okay. We can move on to Meadow Pond also. And keep in mind also, the, the numbers that you're seeing at the bottom of the slide there is totals for the schools and not including the kindergarten. So the schools are all a little bit larger than it looks like they are there. And again, we see very favorable class sizes here, and we're ready to make adjustments if necessary. Moving on to the middle school. Now we project out by grade levels, six, seven, and eight. You can see some increase there in sixth grade next year, but a little bit of a decrease in seventh and, and as well in eighth. So overall, the school is growing a bit. And the sections, as a result, also, you see an increase of sections in sixth grade and in seventh grade, but a decrease, sorry, you see a decrease in seventh grade, and then you see flat in eighth grade. Moving on to the high school, similarly, a very small change, a little, a little bit smaller at the high school, but not in because of the number of different classes and electives there. Not so much difference in terms of sections, et cetera. Although you will, you will see some reflection of the decrease in staffing when we show you that slide later on. But again, we maintain those favorable class sizes across the board. Moving on, so now we, we go through the staffing changes. And here you see the, the numbers in parentheses are reductions. So you see the one positive number is that psychologist that I spoke about a moment ago. And the other places are reductions. Some of these I know are coming from that sixth grade where we're seeing some reduction there. And, and those can be partial positions that add up to be the numbers that you see in the parentheses here. So with a reduction, just 2.8 in the teaching staff. Then we move on to the next slide. Here you see support staff reflected on the top half of the slide. And these changes were actually changes that have already occurred through, through reductions in either retirements or other departures. We're not actually reducing from current staffing levels this year. We're reducing from budget because the reductions have already taken place. And then if you looked out at the bottom, you see the total, the 2.8 from the previous page, and the 9.25 reflected on this page. So a reduction of 12 FTEs as a reduction. But again, we, we, we want to be transparent, so we put the asterisks at the bottom that says the contingency positions are not included here. And additionally, some of those contingent funds, those sort of COVID contingent funds that we spoke about at the beginning may be used for some staffing as necessary if we need it for additional support in the next year. Moving on, now we're going to move into the budget analysis, and I'll turn over to Denell. Thanks, Denell.
Thank you, Andrew. So in this section of the presentation, we're going to review a couple of the following terms: budget to budget, tax cap, tax levy, and tax rate. So this is the same slide that you saw Andrew speak about before. So our budget to budget increase is $1,770,200. That's a 1.59% increase from the previous year. This is a nine-year history of our budget to budget increases and also our tax levy increases. If you take a look at 2013, 2014, that was our nine-year high. And that is still higher than what we're proposing in 2021, 22. So we, we still haven't reached what we were at our peak eight years ago. And same with that tax levy. The tax levy was up to $102,781,072 in fiscal year 2013-14. And the tax levy we're presenting to, to the budget, to the voters this month is $99,7394 or, or 1.79% levy to levy increase. So we spoke about that increase in the budget of approximately $1.7 million. This slide represents a little over $2 million of budget increases. So salaries account for 200, excuse me, $971,627 worth of increases. And then employee benefits, the aggregate is $835,228. Operation, maintenance, and transportation, excluding the salaries which are mentioned above, are increasing about $151,115. And then pupil services, which includes guidance counselor, social worker, psychologist. Those are, and also instructional computers are increasing $52,167. And then we have a small increase in curriculum and professional development. So this slide totals $222,441. And then it is offset by some budget reductions. Andrew spoke about that interfund transfer that we have. We do plan to decrease our interfund transfer from prior year of $300,000, but still accomplish those things that were listed on the slide. He spoke about instructional supplies. Our principals and directors took a really good, hard look. And we were able to reduce that by $43,421. So the net of that, combined with the budget increase, gets us really close to that $1.7 million increase. And then there's other things throughout the budget that, that vary. Tax levy, we are in a tax levy environment, a tax cap environment. Just a reminder, some people believe that the tax cap is a 2% tax cap. It is in fact 2% or CPI, whichever is lower. The CPI, known as the computer price index, for the calendar 2020 increased 1.23%. And there's also assessment growth factor, which is calculated in the tax cap calculation. And that is your brick and mortar growth. That accounts for $1,57,844 of additional growth within the community. So on this next slide, I'll show you how those numbers play into this tax cap calculation. We begin with what our current tax cap is, which is $97,948,497. And then we add that growth factor I just spoke about in. And so that brings us to $99,6341. The state allows us to take out some exemptions from the, this, from the prior year. That's debt service, capital expenditures, some building and transportation aid. So that nets to $1,967,747. So we reduce that from the $99 million above and get an adjusted prior year levy of $97,038,594. And then we multiply that by the CPI, that 1.23%. The state, since we had a neutral tax levy last year, it does allow us to carry over a small $128,038 in the calculation. So our tax levy before we add back in those exclusions is $98,362,07. So on the next slide, you'll see that $98 million carried over. And then the current year exemptions are added back in. So those are slightly different than the prior year exemptions. They do look at our building aid, transportation aid, and some debt service. We add that back, back in, and that gives us a total levy limit with exclusions of $100,326,742, or an increase of $2,378,245. The, the tax levy that we're proposing to balance the budget is actually $626,348 lower than the allowable limit. So what does that mean to the voters? That means that we need a simple majority vote, which is a 50% vote plus one to pass the budget. If the board had decided to exceed that tax levy increase, we would have needed what's called a supermajority, which is a 60% vote. That is not the case with this vote. We will need a simple majority of 50% plus one. Within a tax cap environment, we still have some contingent budget requirements. It is still in effect that budgets can only be presented to the voters twice. And if the budget is defeated both times, then the tax levy cannot exceed what it was in 2020-21. So taxes are just one source of revenue. This slide shows you a list of other sources of revenue that we have. During the budget process, we look at all sources of revenue. You can see state aid is our next largest source of revenue. It is projected to go down slightly at $8,292,486. It's important just to recognize that that state aid does not include the different stimulus packages. I think we spoke at great length about this in, in March. There's three types of stimulus packages, the CARES Act, the CRSSA Act, and the American Recovery Plan. The CARES Act was used to help the state balance the state aid giving to schools in this 2021 budget. The, the coronavirus response relief supplemental appropriations act, that is being used for next year. And then the American Recovery Plans Act is monies that the school can use over a three-year span. But those two future monies are coming in, not as general fund aid, but actually into a separate funding source known as grants or special aid fund. So the state aid, you might have thought with all these stimulus packages would be increased greater. But we are still receiving that money. The, the CRSSA funds were projected to receive a little over $279,000. And then the American Rescue Plan were projected to receive $628,118 to use over a three-year span. So our tax calculation, we do look at, we have to balance our budget. So our budget for the 21-22 school year is $113,242,880. We look at those other sources of revenue, subtract those out. We also plan to use some fund balance and reserves. We subtract that out. And that's how much we know we need to raise from the, the tax levy. So the tax levy being proposed in this budget is $99,7394. But of course, that is not finalized until the end of July. That is not finalized until the end of July with the Board of Education. The tax rate. So these next two slides will show the tax rate. Changes. And this is the tax rate percent change per thousand. It's very important to note here that these are based on assessed values. The assessed values have not been finalized by the town level. And they won't be finalized until mid-July, late July. So these rates could change, but at this point. Bedford is looking at a five point one three percent increase. Lewisboro is projected to decrease about point zero six percent. North Salem is, has a six point oh five percent increase in their rate per thousand. And Pound Ridge is also decreasing at point two, point three, four percent. So. Budget summaries. Notes. I think I'm going to turn this over to Andrew, right?
Thank you, Danell. Appreciate all of that information. So just to summarize again, the budget. We think this budget, the board's budget now prepares the district very well to emerge from pandemic conditions. With unknowns still ahead and there are still a number of unknowns, even as we. Certainly are hopeful in terms of the virus itself and, and, and community health improving. There are quite a number of unknowns in terms of what the state may require of us or allow us to do in terms of school in the fall. We have not received that kind of guidance yet. So that will have impact on how schools run in the fall. So this budget provides, we, we believe what we need to do regardless of what's to come in the coming months. And it provides, as we've noted, those academic supports and other engagement opportunities. That we think will be so valuable when our students are making their full return. They've, they've made that return now. But we want to make sure in the year ahead, we have everything that we need for them. So that they can become fully re-engaged in the best possible ways in school. And it allows us also the opportunity to learn and reflect on this last year's experience and to move ahead as well as possible. And you see those numbers reflected again at the bottom. If we move on. The propositions themselves that the voters will see two propositions on the budget. This first one, proposition number one. Is the opportunity to raise those taxes necessary to pay for this school budget for the twenty one, twenty two school year. Proposition number two is the bus replacement proposition in order for us to maintain. A healthy fleet of buses that can pass the Department of Transportation inspections. What we're asking here is not for any additional funding. We always try to make that very clear. We're simply asking here permission to transfer funds in the existing budget. To lines from which we can purchase these vehicles that you see here, the three large passenger buses, the two smaller passenger buses. Two, two other passenger buses and one operations and maintenance vehicle all at a total of six hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. And again. We're simply asking the voters permission to move funds from within the existing general fund this year's budget, not to raise new funds for these buses. And then moving on, we're now close to the bottom of this slide, all the way down there on May sixth budget hearing. Looking ahead to May eighteenth, when budget votes will take place. In our three elementary schools as well as by absentee ballot for those who have requested. And if we move on, next week will be a very busy week as we present the budget again. Thanks to our PTOs for sponsoring this. We do one presentation. Can't really say in each school, we'll still be on Zoom, but we'll be with each school community. We hope. We look forward to seeing them and helping our parents and other, in the community, understand the budget is, ask any questions they might have. And then we move on to the next slide and there it is, the vote on May eighteenth. And we're certainly happy to answer any questions the board members might have. Thank you all. Thank you, Danell.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Danell. Thank you to everybody at our table tonight and to all of the staff members, administrators who. Helped to develop this budget. We feel proud of this budget. We are grateful that it anticipates some unknowns and some contingencies. And, you know, we're reading in the paper about a spirit of hopefulness that I think is emerging across the country. But one that I don't think we can take for granted at this moment. And. It is so helpful to us to be able to think about this budget with our schools more fully open and that we've had kids back to school for three weeks. I think it would feel different. I mean, I think it's okay to acknowledge it would feel different if we were still not able to be back more fully and. It's just, it's, it's a very hopeful moment. And we thank you for. The thoughtfulness and dedication that went into preparing this budget. Thank you. I'm going to pause here just for some final clarifying questions or comments that board members might have. And I will also member, mention, pardon me, to members of the community who might be waiting. For public forum that in a short while, we are going to turn our attention to public forum. So please feel free to use the Q and A at the bottom of the. Zoom screen for some questions or thoughts that you might also want to share with us tonight. Thank you. And with that, I will pause if board members have any final clarifying questions, having seen the presentation any number of times or wish to make a comment.
I think I'd like to make a quick comment, Marjorie, for me. I, I, I think it's a really responsible budget and I really want to commend Andrew and the administration for, for presenting it to us. And I think it really does sort of meet the, the uncertainty that we're facing as we, as we look forward to next year. There's just one item on there that is still in the back of my mind and it relates to our sustainability efforts and the procurement of new buses. And obviously we have a proposition for new buses every year. I would really like to see perhaps next year or the year after that. And I know we are beginning to look at infrastructure for electronic, electric vehicles. I'd like to see that next year, maybe the proposition we can start to think about, including one or two electric buses and start to move the district in that direction. And I know it's more, it's complicated. But, you know, I, I feel like. We every year have an opportunity to purchase new vehicles and it's probably time we sincerely considered. How we can start to switch the fleet over to electric rather than these buses.
Please know Rory that we are sincerely considering it and the board will hear more about that when the Sustainability Committee presents in June.
And there's some hopeful news on that front too. You know, some of our local elected officials have some legislation that's going to go to the governor that might help us out. You know, in large part, our efforts to conserve energy and to really reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Have been somewhat, I don't want to say lockstep, but dependent on offerings that NYSERTA can make based on new regulations and, and government. I don't want to say sponsorship, but endorsement and support for these efforts. So this is a really exciting time that, you know, maybe. By this time of year, next year, there will actually be new incentives that we can take advantage of, which would be terrific.
Wonderful. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I might just make one other comment, Marjorie. I think it's probably just worth noting and I know Andrew shared the timeline earlier, but. Probably the reason we don't have a whole lot of questions here is because we've been looking at this budget. As it took shape since February, right? And we've all had many, many, many hours going over it at the very line item level of detail. And this is probably at least in a, in a formal setting, we've reviewed those same slides, maybe five or six times now. So. I just want to make sure that the public isn't thinking, wow, those guys are just going to put that thing through. We really have given this a lot of thought and effort over the past. Three or four months. And so I think everybody is satisfied. So thank you.
Thank you for the reminder and thank you to my board colleagues for the hours of deliberations. Both by weeknight and by Saturday morning. I think we had ample opportunity to ask questions and have them answered. So thank you all. If there are no further comments or questions, then please allow us to just express our gratitude one last time. And with that, we will look forward to our community vote on May eighteenth. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So now we're going to turn our attention to nine point oh three. And just to remind everyone, as Marjorie said, after. We hear from our board candidates, there is an opportunity for public forum and you can use the Q and A for that. Just a reminder, we can't enter anonymous comments into the public record. So if you do use the Q and A, please be sure to just identify yourself and. If you have children in the community, we always like to hear about that. So right now I'd like to turn to nine point oh three, which is an opportunity to hear from our board candidates. And so we'd like to welcome. I think Elena will be brought in. Elena Schneier will be brought into the Zoom so that she can join us. And obviously, Marjorie. Welcome as a candidate and we are happy that you're running. And we'd love to hear from both candidates who will share a few words with us about their candidacy. And I think once Elena is in, we go in alphabetical order. So Marjorie will start and then Elena will. Join her. The candidates have three minutes to make their presentation. We don't have an actual timer that will play. But Kimberly Monzon, who's our district clerk, will just give you a little notice when you're near to wrapping up. So thanks for joining us, Elena, and welcome. And you will go first. When you're ready.
I think.
Oh, so Marjorie, you go first because it shifts. Sorry. The two S's are very confusing.
Yeah, and I don't have a C, but usually it's there. People put it in anyway, so.
Thank you so much. No, no worries. Thank you, Julia, and welcome, Elena. It's great to see you. So good evening and thank you so much for this opportunity. It is an honor to seek another term on the K L S D Board of Education. I could not be more committed to the ongoing work of the school board and I devote countless hours each week on your behalf to advance the goals of our schools and our community. In addition to my current role on our board, I am also a director for the Westchester Putnam County School Board Association. And I'm dedicated to bringing best practices from the region to benefit our students. The work of the board during my previous terms has taught me many things, perhaps most importantly, that the key issues facing our school community. At a given time cannot be easily predicted in advance. We have faced many new and unpredictable challenges and opportunities. Managing those challenges and capitalizing on the opportunities are best achieved by a well-run district with stable, trusted, competent leadership. And excellent teachers, administrators, staff, parents and students pulling together with a shared sense of purpose to achieve our goals. Throughout my board service, this has been my priority, to hire an excellent superintendent, to encourage excellence in our staff. And to be well positioned to deal effectively with new challenges while carefully managing the school budget and acting as good stewards of our community's resources. Beyond that overarching goal, a dynamic work in progress. I'd like to share a few of the specific initiatives that have improved the daily life of our students and community during my time on the board. Implementation of full day kindergarten and healthier start times at the secondary level. Improved security measures and sustainable practices in our school buildings. Careful resource management resulting in three consecutive budget to budget and tax levy decreases. Expanded extracurricular and internship opportunities. Innovation in our classrooms and in the hands of every student so she or he could learn from home. These accomplishments are attributable to the collective effort of many individuals working together. But I remind our community of these achievements tonight to illuminate the supporting role that I've played. And that a board can play to respond to our community's educational values and priorities and to a constantly changing environment. Our work is ongoing and newly complex. I look forward to creating opportunities to learn from all of you regarding what has worked well and where we must improve to meet the needs of our students. Looking ahead, it is clear that the magnitude of new external factors acting upon our schools is staggering and there is much work to be done. The next phase of our work must respond not only to federal and state mandates and executive orders issued at a record pace. But to new exigencies, including the next phase of the current crisis or a similarly disruptive public health crisis. Ongoing work to engender equity, inclusivity and justice. Leveraging the very best of new technology investments while remaining vigilant about internet safety, the integrity of our curriculum. And unintended consequences of screens and software. And implementation of new learning standards in ELA, math, science and sustainability. If elected for another term on the board, it would be my honor to continue to bring our community's educational priorities into focus. While working through these external challenges and opportunities. I know many of you and I thank you for sharing your experiences and perspectives with me over the years. For those I don't know yet, I thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself and look forward to meeting you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Marjorie. And now Elena, if you would like to. You have three minutes and we're looking forward to hearing from you.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. My name is Elana Schneier and I'm a candidate for the school board. I'm really excited to be here this evening. Thank you for letting me join you, board members. I've spoken to almost all of you and it's great to see you in person now or through the video. So my name is Elana Schneier. I am a candidate for the school board. I have three children, two of whom attend Increase Miller and one who's only fifteen months old. So she'll be a future elementary school student. I, we've lived in Gold, we live in Goldensbridge. We've been here for three years. And I've, in those three years, I've already done some volunteer work. I've been on the Increase Miller enrichment committee. I currently sit on the Lewisboro Town Housing Committee and I'm really proud to be on the inaugural subcommittee of the Lewisboro Pride Celebration. I also am the chair in my own community of the Goldensbridge Day Camp. When I'm not doing volunteer work, I run my own business. It's a consulting company where I work with nonprofits, businesses and government to help them do their work better. And I do that through capacity building, content creation. And I'm also have a public relations part of my practice. So I'm a registered lobbyist with the New York City and New York State. I run political campaigns and I also teach, do a lot of popular education around how government works. And a lot of my work, I have designed a number of workshops that de mystify government. So I teach about how the budget works at the city and state level and federal level. How a bill becomes a law, how the political cycle works and how that all fits together. So I'm really excited to bring that experience to the board. One of my favorite consulting projects was a project I did with the New York City Department of Education with their Computer Science for All Initiative. Where we partnered with the city to redesign the curriculum, a co. Something called a hack league, which was a co-curricular activity. And we were using civics to teach computational thinking. And that was a really, really exciting project that I think highlighted how exciting education can be. And I see a lot of that in the district and I'm really excited to kind of bring new ideas and new energy to the board. I also, prior to starting my own consulting business, I worked for the New York State Assembly for a number of years for an assembly member. Who wrote the Dignity for All Students Act. And while I worked for him, worked on making sure that it was being implemented well and designing a new. Curriculum for teachers, for pre-certification for teachers. I also, prior to that, I also worked in housing for a long time and I was a community organizer. So I'm really excited to bring my community organizing skills. My facilitation skills and my expertise to the board. During this past month, as I've been campaigning, I've had the really wonderful experience of speaking to over a hundred people in the community. About their ideas. And one of the things I'm most excited about doing is really trying to bring more parent voices. Into discussions and really bringing more community process to everything that we're doing. Because I think that when we have multiple voices at the table and multiple perspectives, you really end up with the best policy. So I'm really excited to bring that to the board and to join you and look forward to that. So thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. We're happy to meet you and look forward to the results of the election on May eighteenth. So thank you to both of you for your statement and we wish you both very good luck in the upcoming election.
Thank you. Thank you. Julia for welcoming us and thank you to Elena for joining us. And I think this brings us now to. Board dialogue, if I'm not mistaken. I'm sorry, public forum, excuse me. And in a moment, when you're ready, Kim, I'll ask you to let us know whether we received any emails to our public forum email address or if anybody's waiting to share remarks. Thank you so much.
I thank you, Marjorie. At this time, I have received no comments for public forum, either in the email or in the Q and A.
Thank you so much, Kim. And thank you so much to members of the community for joining us this evening and your virtual presence. This brings us then to the consent agenda, eleven point oh one. And I'm not aware of any consent agenda items that. Need to be pulled out. Let me just pause to make sure nobody was waiting to do so. And if not, then I will move the consent agenda. If I could ask for somebody to please second it.
Well, Marjorie.
Yes.
So I think we went quickly through public forum and someone did just put something there. And I don't know whether we want to just give them a minute to. Put their, they said they have the question. I don't know if we want to just pause for a second so someone has time to write their comment.
Well, perhaps why don't we go forward with the consent agenda and then we can circle back to public forum in just a moment. Thank you for alerting me, Julia. I appreciate that. So I'll move the consent agenda. If somebody could please second it, seconded by Bill. Thank you. And just briefly wanted to point out that thank you, Bill, for the overview of the policies that are on our agenda tonight. There are some pronoun agreements that might be slightly updated from the individual to. There are some pronoun agreements that might be slightly updated from the individual to the plural. Just wanted to make a note of that for the public record. And that's all that I needed to add by way of discussion. And if there's no discussion on any other consent agenda items, then we can vote. If everybody's ready, all in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Great. Thank you. Six zero. Okay, terrific. So then why don't we just take a step back and let's see. Going to pause just a moment for questions.
The person is asking whether they should speak or type their questions. So just for clarification, we can clarify the way that the public forum works?
Sure. So yes, please, we ask you to type your questions in the Q and A at the bottom of the screen. Well, this is getting a little complicated. And I'm getting some feedback. Is there something I should be doing differently? Lori, perhaps your headphones aren't working? There we go. Thank you. Okay, so I think we've received a couple of comments in the Q and A. And Kim, when you're ready, I'll ask you to read those. And just a reminder to the community, we're not going to engage in a back and forth right this moment, but in a short while, we'll have an opportunity for some board dialogues. So we'll be just listening and reflecting on your thoughts and comments.
Okay. Thank you, Marjorie. So the first comment is from, just bear with me here for a second. It's from Matthew Goclia. "Disappointed with the A F T E reduction for special ed services. I understood from Andrew that this has already happened. Why aren't they being replaced?" And I'm having, just, sorry, I apologize. There we go. Okay. And then the next comment is from Meredith Black. "Firstly, I wanted to thank the board and administration on their work in putting and pulling the budget together. It is not an easy task to do. That being said, I do have a number of concerns regarding the budget and proposed changes to staffing. As many of you are aware, I have longstanding concerns with respect to the instruction of E L A, particularly as it pertains to beginning readers. And the budget notes that there are reductions to E L A staffing. I'm also concerned with the staffing reductions." Sorry, I'm late. "In the area of special education, particularly coming off the pandemic where services were not adequately provided and many students missed services." I think was all that was posted.
Thank you.
That's all that I have, Marjorie. Oh, sorry. Matthew Goclia, "Two policies, specifically special ed policies are very dated. The final district plan for special ed is dated 2012. Policy 432112 has to do with physical restraints and timeout rooms for only disabled students. Language is very dated and insensitive. First line, the Board of Education recognizes that students with disabilities sometimes exhibit inappropriate behaviors that impede learning." This is dated 2011. Okay, I think I think that is it now.
Thank you, Kim. We appreciate your help. And thank you to members of the community for your patience and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We can turn our attention to them in a moment. I guess we have gone through the consent agenda. So we are going to be in just a moment at board dialogue and discussion. Where if anybody wants to offer clarification or make a comment, I'll allow just a second or two for folks to gather their thoughts. Bill, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just in terms of the last point. Yes, the policy was dated 2011. That's why it was one of the policies that we went through today. So the new policy has, some of the language has changed. That was part of the objection. And it will be dated 2021. And that's, it's one of the reasons we were going through these special ed policies is that some of them haven't been looked at in a while.
Thank you, Bill. And just to, you know, really crystallize the clarification, the objectionable language was replaced with different language. Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, it, we use more modern language for, for terms. And we were very clear about the, you know, the, the purpose of any of these interventions, the process that goes around it, the documentation that has to happen afterwards, the review that has to happen, really trying to set up, you know, a appropriate policy that's, that is modern.
Right. Thank you. And also that the policy applies to all students. Yeah. While others might be gathering their thoughts, I actually did have a separate topic for clarifying question for board dialogue. Just trying to find my notes because it occurred to me during the presentation of the budget, but it wasn't exactly related to that. I just wondered with regard to the money that we're receiving that we can spend over three years. My recollection was that some of that money, or maybe all of it, is to be used to be applied to remediate some learning loss. And, but please tell me if that's not correct. Is that your understanding? Am I right in remembering that? Because if so, I guess just the question that was forming for me was, how are school districts, because this won't be unique to Katona, Lewisboro, but how are school districts planning to measure who might be in need of some additional instruction? And how that money is going to be spent? Do, and if it's too premature to speak to that, you know, that's fine to say and we can revisit it another night, but I just am not clear on, you know, what the metrics would even be. So we would figure out how we're spending that money.
So there will be an application process similar to how we go through with other grants that we receive. So we haven't received the outline of, of that yet. I do believe that there's a webinar Andrew and I plan to attend later on. So we'll have more information as, as this unfolds.
I think generally speaking, Marjorie, you are correct. We've heard similar things. I think it was indicated that 20% of certain funds should be used in the way you described. But there's also been a lot of discussion along exactly the lines that you're asking, which is how is learning loss defined? How does one measure it? That sort of thing. So there is still a lot of work to be, to be done. And again, the funds that we're talking about there, I think are primarily the $600,000 that are, that we think are allocated to us over the next three years, to be used, spread out over the next three years.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just stay tuned as you continue to learn more about it. That's helpful. And along the same lines, there's been a lot of very positive press about New York's agreement to fully fund foundation aid over the next three years. And I just wondered if you could clarify the extent to which, if at all, that affects Katona, Lewisboro.
It does. There, so in the general aid, and that's used to help offset or to help balance the budget, the general aid, that eight point two, close to eight point three million dollar number I showed you on the revenue side.
Yes.
Um, a good portion of that is foundation aid. So having that steady is, is really beneficial to Katona.
Okay, great. But they haven't projected like what the new numbers would be for us. That'll be when we get our state aid.
They have some preliminary projections. I don't have them in front of me tonight, but it's, it's pretty, pretty flat. I can't say if we're increasing or decreasing slightly, but knowing that our overall state aid is only decreasing by a little more than $10,000. I, I would just say off the top of my head, it's not varying too much, but without having that information for me, I can't.
I think it might be fair to hazard a guess that, well, it's, it's really wonderful that New York State is taking this step and fully funding the foundation aid, more likely to have significant impact on high-need districts than on a district like ours.
That, that was my impression and that's why I was asking. I wasn't really clear on how, how that aid is apportioned or what it would mean for us.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it may have some impact, but I think it's going to have more significant impact in, in other districts. I suspect, again, we're not too, a little bit too soon for us to know. Can we, can we come back to the, the staffing questions? Because I would certainly want to give clarification if I wasn't clear during the budget presentation.
Thank you. We'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Before we just get off of that topic, Andrew, I just wanted to circle back to that learning loss. I did, I have my notes in front of me now. So 20% of that, of that stimulus money would be needed to go to learning loss and 80% would need to maintain the continuity of service at the school district to our, to our students.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think I had misremembered that much more of it was actually for the learning law. So it's 20% of the 628,000 over three years.
Right.
Got it. Okay, thanks a lot.
So Andrew, I'll turn it back over.
Sure. Thanks, Dan. On the, on the, on the staffing analysis, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you. You might be able to help out a little bit because you've spoken to that slide in more detail in the past. We're talking about some support staff positions and the reductions of, I think it was eight to nine positions on that one slide from earlier in the budget.
It was eight positions. And remember, it's budget to budget. And when we adopt the budget in the prior year, it's March. And even most of the C S E meetings are not held yet. And so they haven't reviewed student needs. So, and then each of them was achieved through attrition. So no student had a staff member removed from providing service to them unless it was a C S E decision. And no staff member was reduced unless they actually ended up resigning or retiring from the district is the way that that group worked. And then with, there was a question also about the E L A reduction.
Can we just pause, can I just pause on that one there? I'm sorry, but just before, just to emphasize then, because I want to make sure that community members who are watching are really with us on that, because it would be very important to us not to make reductions in an area, you know, where it could have impact for students. So as I'm hearing that, these are the types of assignments that come specifically out of C S E meetings for individual students. And when a student may need an additional support or not, if they weren't assigned for the coming year, for the year that we're in, we're simply recognizing that fact in the budget now. And if, and if a student in an upcoming C S E meeting has need for an additional person, it's not that we wouldn't have funds available to provide that support. We would. And if the person, if the student had a need for an additional aid, for example, we would have the funds available to provide that aid.
That's a good point, Andrew, because in other years, we have added more staff.
Correct.
In categories because it's very student-dependent.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. And then the E L A reduction that was referenced in a different question is actually strictly enrollment-based and it's at the middle school. So it's just a matter of a smaller sixth grade cohort moving to grade seven. And so there's two fewer sections of seventh grade next year, and that's where that reduction comes from.
Thank you.
Can I, there's one last question there. Somebody was asking, can they see the policies? And so on the the website, the public agenda for today's meeting, the policy section, so 12.07 is where you could see the policy.
And you can see them as they've been revised for tonight. So in, in some cases, if people have looked in the policy section of board docs and they've seen the older versions, tonight you can see on the board agenda, the, the newer revised versions that were just adopted this evening by the board.
Didn't realize that community members were not actually looking at the policies on tonight's agenda. I was trying to understand what's happening. Thank you. I did actually just have a couple of other topics that I just wanted to inquire about. It's possible tonight's not the right night for us to hear anything about it, but I wondered if end-of-year celebrations are coming into focus at the different levels of the school, whether it's the high school, the middle school, the elementary schools. And again, it might be still in the works, but I just, I know we're in a different place this year than we were last year and that last year was unprecedented. And I didn't know if there was something to be shared with the board or with the community yet. And if, if not yet, that's, that's fine, too.
We can, we can certainly speak to some. I'm, I know, I'm fairly certain that both our high school and our middle school have shared their plans. I'm not entirely sure if the elementary schools have shared their plans or not. So let me, let me speak first to high school and middle school. The high school will be holding, first of all, we should say, there continue to be a whole set of guidelines in terms of gatherings that schools are required to follow. And they're all around the size of the gathering. So there's particular, particular parameters. If you have a gathering of up to 100 outside, then they change. If you go up to 200 and then they change again. If you go over 200 and then they change again. If you go over 500, they relate to the size of the venue that you're in. You know, if you're going to have a gathering of over 500, it needs to be only such a percentage of the size of the venue. So you need to have a fairly large venue in which to have the gathering. So the high school has, has notified its community that it's been able to secure a stadium in Rockland County where it can hold. And, and the, and the really nice thing about that is, I think, I think graduates, first of all, all the graduates will be able to gather. And I think each will be able to have up to four guests, right, which is more than would be in some other venues where the limit would be two guests per student. Because it's still a fairly large event, there are, there are regulations around things like contact tracing, proof of immunization, proof of a negative COVID test. You know, we, we have to gather that information for any gathering over 200 people, even in an outdoor space. We have to gather and maintain all of that kind of information. So we've also contracted with a vendor who's going to work with us to provide the testing. We know, and that was quite honestly, one of the reasons I was encouraging the vaccinations earlier tonight, because it will make life both healthier and simpler for people if they have those vaccinations. If they don't, then testing will be necessary. We know that we, the high school has kind of polled its community to understand what the needs might be and the readiness might be for that kind of thing. And then we'll have this vendor available also if there's last minute need for some testing to be done. And that actually applies both to the prom that the high school is attempting to hold this year, unlike last year when it wasn't able to. It has secured a place for a prom. But again, testing is required or proof of immunization and contact tracing and all those other things, too. So, so it is complicated. So that's the high school. The middle school, because of those same complications for its eighth grade moving up ceremony, I believe the middle school announced yesterday. I hope I'm not getting ahead of anything.
They did.
Okay, good. I don't want to let the cat out of the bag, but I believe they are going to be doing a virtual celebration coupled with the kind of parade that they did last year through the schools with each student having an opportunity to be celebrated as they come through the circle there. And I think even step out and have a picture taken with family and be celebrated in the most celebratory way that they can be in that environment. But it, it has a lot to do with how complicated it is now. This one, you know, is taking place at school, on a school day. The other grade levels are in the school building. So it just becomes very, very complicated to try to pull off. It would have to be an outdoor event with all of those same kind of restrictions that I just mentioned for the high school. I'm not sure now if the elementary schools have announced their plans or not. So maybe I won't get ahead of that one just yet, but that gives you a flavor of, of what's happening. And if it hasn't been announced, the elementary schools yet, it will be soon.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
And then just the last item on my mind was with regard to vaccinations, just anticipating that maybe younger children will be able to obtain vaccines. I don't know, perhaps before our next board meeting. It's not really clear to me. These things happen very, very slow and then very fast. But I know that, you know, there are different motivating factors for conditions when it's appropriate to allow kids to zoom in from home and when maybe it's not. But just in anticipating that middle school kids potentially would be getting vaccinated and then not feeling well. But just in anticipating that middle school kids potentially would be getting vaccinated and then not feeling well after the vaccine. You know, I guess I am wondering if they would be able to zoom in from home after having been vaccinated.
Sorry if I, if I missed a piece of that, Marjorie, but are you thinking ahead to the fall? Or?
No, I was thinking about these announcements that we're hearing that.
Oh, for the younger ages and happening that quickly.
That middle school kids might be able to obtain vaccines really soon.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe I'm being too optimistic.
I don't, it's, like you said, any, anything is a.
So we don't have to decide, we don't have to decide that now, but I just want to raise awareness that I think that's a tricky one. We of course want to encourage our middle schoolers to get vaccinated as soon as they become eligible.
Yeah.
And then if they're not feeling well, you know, you don't, they can't come to school. We wouldn't want them to. So I think it's, I think it could get even more complicated, maybe. It's just, it's just my, it's just my comment for tonight.
Yeah.
I guess I would say if they're not, if they're not feeling well, then maybe they just take a sick day and just rest and come back the next day. Because generally, at least as far as I've heard most people and from my own experience, it's about a 24 hour thing. And then you sort of feel better. So they might just have to be absent to, until they feel better. I don't know. I mean, I understand people feeling that pressure to zoom in even when they're home, but I think maybe they should just rest.
Julia, I was going to say something similar because it, it seems to be a pretty wide spectrum, you know, of responses. And in some cases, I would absolutely agree that in some cases, the student really should be resting. And that in, you know, a day's rest seems to make things right again. So.
Yeah, I think that's very helpful to hear. I'm not, I'm not sure. I think, I think maybe just then it's a question of how we really message that and that maybe we have a different expectation for our middle school students to rest than for our high school students who might not feel like they can take that rest. Sadly, but yeah, thank you. I understand what you're saying. Any other topics or comments?
I guess, you know, I, I feel, I don't know that we've talked about this, but I just do want to acknowledge the opportunities that have been created for when the vaccine age went to 16 and 18. The opportunity for our high school students to get vaccinated has been something that's been emailed out to us. And that's been really helpful. And I think that's an effort of both some community members and the school district, but I don't, I don't know that it's been acknowledged at our meeting. I just do want to say thank you because I think it's just great to get everybody working together towards getting students vaccinated. And I know that a lot of students did take advantage of that.
Thank you for saying that, Julie. It was in fact a community member who made a connection for us and we're really appreciative to that person for helping us out in that way.
Thank you. And I think we're ready to move on from board dialogue and discussion to future meetings. And as has been mentioned, Tuesday, May 18th, 2021 is our annual budget vote and election. We hope our community will come out to vote. And in between now and then, tomorrow morning at 8:15, the Sustainability Committee is going to meet. Saturday, May 8th. Thank you so much, Kim Monz. And she's holding a special voter registration at 9:00 AM in the district office. Tuesday, May 11th, the Finance Committee will meet at 7:00 PM. And the Board of Ed will next meet on Thursday, May 20th, followed by a Policy Committee meeting Friday morning, May 21st. If I didn't miss anything, then I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn. If someone would like to make a motion. Thank you, Bill. And seconded by Catherine. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you so much, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thanks, Marjorie.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.